Everybody. We'll start our meeting today. The on agenda item number one will be our pledge of allegiance. And we're very fortunate to have troop number 70 here today. So you guys want to come on up and lead us in the pledge? Yeah, perfect. Stand right up here. Great. Thank you. Thank you. Do you anyone want to talk a little bit about the troop? You guys have any interest? Introduce yourselves to everybody.
So I'm the SPL of the troop, which is like pretty much the leader and I plan the meetings and stuff. Just last weekend, we had a backpacking trip, which everyone really enjoyed. We did about 10 miles. And that was just kind of fun. Also, as always, we're doing like service projects around town, Eagle projects. And then, yeah, just more upcoming campouts.
That's great. You guys want to tell us your names so we know who you are? No? All right. I feel about that, but okay. Go ahead, go, go.
My name is Juan Fis. I am a part of troop 70. And what makes it unique is that I would go through a lot of adventurous stuff. And I just really admire that. And he's a great.
Wow.
I'm John, also part of 70. Really fun opportunities to.
Right. Thanks.
I'm Michael. And I really enjoy being in the troop and the camp.
Excellent. Hi, Eli. Short and sweet. Okay. Next up, you two guys. Hello, James. Awesome. Good stuff, guys.
One more.
Yes.
I'm Michael. Show leader in the troop. This guy. I help organize something. He's very helpful, I guess. Probably one of the best. We've had in a while. Yeah, it's a lot of fun. We're excited to.
Excellent, guys. We appreciate you coming. It's a great organization. And of course, I'll always embarrass Eric being.
No, I got to say, I got to say thank you because this is my troop. I mean, this is the troop I went through when I was when I was in scouts. And it was a great experience and I learned you learn a lot about citizenship and service, serving the community. And so I really valued that. To this day, my two best friends in the world are guys that I met in the Boy Scout troop 50 some odd years ago. So it's a it's a great experience. Enjoy it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you all. Really appreciate it. That was awesome. Okay, well, can we now get the roll call?
Yes. Rita Patino.
Here.
Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Jennifer. Luke Conklin. Mike Morrow.
Here.
Maria Norton.
Kimberly Norton.
Here.
Zoe Orman.
Here on Zoom.
Christina Ross here. Eric Turner.
Here.
Young.
Here.
Jennifer Zonis.
Here.
Okay, you have a form.
Fantastic. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Agenda item number two, good old minutes. Good old minutes. Okay, so we have approval of the minutes of the following meetings. Special meeting, September 4, 2024. Regular meeting, October 16, 2024. It's my hope that there will really be no discussion all those times. No, which is fine, totally 100%. So why don't we just talk about that and then we'll make the motion and then you okay with that?
Yeah.
Great, let's do it.
So there's a paragraph starts Dr. Kavukchin. I get it. Could we say Dr. K. Said he said he spoke on behalf of his family.
Agreed.
Yes. And then the other one is the the long paragraph dealing with the P O C D, the last sentence, it says, right now it says section eight dash two, actually, it should say section eight dash two. Eight, three, H two is a proper reference. H eight dash two, H two.
Wow.
Yes, thank you for catching.
It's good, Tom.
Kim, you have.
I have brief, very brief things. Okay, under others present, I just wanted to correct the spelling of Bob Mantilla's name. Is he here? It's M A N T I double L A. And then Robert Friar, his name is actually Robin Friar. So you can either change it to Rob or Robin, whatever you want. And then I just have a comment under Neely Sticknoss comments, which is, let's see. That's the first paragraph after public comments. So I was just a little bit confused by the second sentence where it starts. She recommended, and I watched the tape again. And what I wanted to add, she recommended, she recommended adding to the planning and zoning application and then change to the same question as on the demolition, that the same questions as are on the demolition application. Because it was just a little bit unclear what was written there. So basically, after application, planning and zoning application, say the same questions on the demolition application as on the demolition application. That's it.
I'm fine with that. Great. What else?
No, no.
Do you have that written down?
I have it written down.
Can you submit it, please?
Just send it along. All right. That was great. Okay, let's make a motion. Tom, please make a motion.
Adopt them both?
Yeah.
I move we adopt both sets of minutes that we have before.
Jennifer seconds, any discussion?
Sorry, on the second set of minutes, the same names are needs to be, the spelling needs to be corrected on the second set of minutes. So it's M A N T I double L A. It is on the on the RTC roster. Oh, that's wrong?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, then Rob, then just change his name. It's not Robert. It's either Rob or Robin. Thanks.
Friar.
Yeah. On both minutes, his name is spelled as Robert Friar, but that's not his name. Make a comment.
Yeah, absolutely.
I really like this format of minutes. They're succinct, and I think if they're long, people are less likely to read it. So if we could use this going forward, that'd be helpful.
Thank you for the comment. Like it. All right. So let's move it along to a vote. All in favor of the motion made by Tom Butterworth to approve the minutes for both meetings. All in favor? They voted too, so count their votes. That's awesome. Our old deputized, you too, but we're all good. All right.
Everybody.
Deputized council people. All right, fantastic. Agenda item two is off. Agenda item number three, public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak to the town council on agenda topics scheduled for review and or vote. Speakers are requested to provide their name and street address and comments will be limited to two to three minutes, subject to the total number of speakers. We have anyone? Okay, great. If you'd state your name and address for the record. Let's say Sarah.
Sorry, I was not sure if you were speaking to me. Hi, everyone. My name is Sarah Langrick and I live at 68 Wordwell Drive. Thank you for allowing me a minute to speak. I am a town players of New Canaan board member and a theater mom to two kids at East Elementary. We consider the powerhouse our home away from home. My kids have been in community shows here like they're rehearsing for now. They've helped greet patrons coming to shows, handing out programs, welcoming folks, and have come to many theater camps here over the summer. We are looking forward to many, many more years of involvement with powerhouse and town players. Your meeting, however, tonight caught us mid rehearsal for the best Christmas pageant ever, which I'm also stage managing. Our show opens on December 6th. We run two weekends. Many of our cast in our show are also New Canaan residents. And we hope to see many of you here to celebrate the holiday season with this wonderful show. We would love to take 15 seconds more of your time if I can. I have a group of people here who would love the opportunity to say hello to you all while we are getting ready for our show. So thank you for the time. Hold on one second.
Go right ahead. Take your time.
Well, hold on. That's my, don't blame my centering Zoom skills. All right. Go ahead, team.
Thank you for supporting our community service in New Canaan. We're having a blast.
So thank you all very much for the few minutes and we hope to see you at the show in a few weeks.
Thank you for speaking. Really appreciate it. And we encourage everybody in the community to attend. I'm sure it'll be an absolutely outstanding production. Eric?
Thank you so much.
Go.
Me? Say something nice? Well, I'm also on the board of the town players in New Canaan and serve with Sarah. It's a wonderful bunch of kids. And if you've seen anything at the powerhouse recently, you've seen some really high quality theater. The performing arts in this town are a gem and a tremendous asset and a great resource. And obviously, I strongly support the powerhouse and town players.
Awesome, Eric. On the spot, you nailed it. All right. Thank you all. Thank you. All right. So are there any other speakers? Awesome. Okay, so we'll move forward to agenda item number four, utilities commission update. From Sven Englund and Rich Towns in 10 minutes. Come on down, fellas. Welcome back. For all of you who may not know, these are two esteemed former members of the town council. Really, really wonderful contributors and just fantastic humans all around. So floor is yours for 10 minutes. That's it.
Getting it done?
Yeah. I got you. Push the button.
I'm trying.
If you hold it down, it might. Yeah?
A little bit more than that.
Thank you.
We'll put it in here. Well, thank you very much for inviting us in to have a chat and bring you up to speed on what we've been doing. I thought I thought I'd just introduce it for a couple of minutes and then.
Make sure you're really in there because I.
You can't.
People can hear it. Yeah.
Oh, you got it. Okay. Got it. Okay, so what's what's what is the mission of the utility commission? And it says, the mission is to help ensure reliable, efficient utility services for the residents and businesses of New Canaan. If we started a year ago, June, and we've been going 16 months. We've had 17 meetings. We've got nine members, which is our full slate. We generally have six to nine members that that attend the meetings. We frequently have a little bit of a problem getting to the quorum. So I might have to make a phone call to get somebody to sign up on Zoom. And the residents attending, this this thing has surprised me a little bit. I thought some people would come, but generally we have somewhere between two and six attendees. We have a few, generally a few people on Zoom. One of the other things that surprised me was when I, when I got this position, I called Tom Teslick, who used to have it. And I think he resigned in what, 2013? Tom's advice to me was, you're going to have to move out of town when this is over. So that hasn't happened yet. But the thing that surprises me is there's been relatively little activity and little, you know, this is really put together to address the cell phone coverage and and problem. But there hasn't been a lot of of interest, quite frankly. Haven't had a lot of incoming emails, et cetera. But that's just just a comment. All the commissioners on all the commissioners at this point are full time employees. And we've just had one commissioner that's moved out of out of state. So she's going to be resigning from the commission. So we'll have an opening. The way we've organized the commission is in three different pieces. Krista Cannon runs the two way mobile communications services. Mike Collins runs power, gas and electric. And that's that's really, you know, the electric company interface. And Bernie Clark does water. What we've done since the beginning is we tried to get presentations from the different utilities in at the commission. And what we were trying to get them to give us was really what are their goals and strategies going forward? So we could, we could figure out what we should do, not just in cellular service, but across the board in in anything that people would consider utilities. And the cell service, obviously, they talked about service quality. They didn't talk much about coverage. They in power talked about reliability and what they're doing to try and make the the power grid more stable. And in water, they talked about service level and maintenance pipes and replacing pipes across the town. So that was what that was what the update was. The initiatives that have been covered by commissioners are cell service, an expansion strategy. And we'll go over that in a few minutes. There's been bury the wire brought forward by Rick Kraken. And he's done a terrific job of trying to keep energy behind it. And I believe making progress. And it's quite interesting because, you know, the all of a sudden, there's a lot of utilities that are burying wires. You know, the New York utility is has announced they're spending, I don't remember what, $2 billion or something burying wires over the next several years. We've had, we've had presentations by several people that that have products or services that people may not be aware of. One of them is cogent, which the the town is currently using in a lot of buildings. When that's cogeneration, where you have a small generator on site that basically runs when you need electricity onsite or runs continuously. And it uses the heat for heat to the building. And if it doesn't need the heat for the building, it dumps it. And they really add a lot of efficiency to the system. And they'll add a lot of resiliency because you've got generators everywhere that are that are operating. And the interesting thing about residential cogen is it is a an affordable way to actually have this operate in people's individual houses. And it it is ecologically much better. It saves a lot of money for the resident when they do it. It has a couple of requirements, which you you need a place to dump the heat. So generally, you need a pool because you use it to heat your pool in the summer and heat your house in the winter. And and it cuts your it cuts your electric bill and it cuts your oil bill. So we've we've brought that forward. And we're gonna, we're gonna figure out how we can get that across to the people in the town for which it would be a relevant product. And we've also done P O C D review and suggestions offered on that. So that's, that's kind of where we've gone in addition to the cell service thing. But some observations I'd make in this, I never realized this before. But this commission is what I call, it's a due commission. It's not a review commission. People don't have to come to us for anything. Right? Most commissions, people want something, so they come to them. The zoning commission, you want to put a garage on, you come to them. That's not the case with us. We have to kind of make up our own agenda, decide what needs to be attacked and go attack it. Projects that we come up with are daunting, they're time consuming for volunteers to to take on. And quite frankly, what does that yield? It yields some slow progress. So I think I think the town is a little disappointed with whether we made any progress on on cell service specifically. And we'll, we'll address that in a couple of minutes. But it's just part of the, I think it's just part of the deal. You know, when we're using volunteers, it's it's difficult. And with all of our volunteers that are full time employees. The focus on cell service and coverage, we'll go, we'll go through that. Why don't I turn over to you for a moment?
Thanks.
When it got hard, I thought I'd do that.
Yeah. What I want to talk to you about tonight is cell service and telecommunications as relates to first responder multiple mobile data terminals. Okay, so you're talking about EMS being able to send data, relevant data to the emergency room at the hospital. And so the people are set up and ready when the patient arrives. What else goes on? We know that the police use their own cell phones to talk with headquarters about stuff that they don't want. Somebody who just has a Bearcat sitting in their, you know, in their lounge, you know, listening to all the traffic going back and forth. You can imagine that there's certain things that, you know, you would not want, you know, general populace to be informed about. None of their business. We do, we did run the UCL study. You guys have all seen that. We all know that we have ported non existent cell phones. So how do we get these mobile data terminals to work? Well, you know, we are, like Rich, Rich said, you know, we can't make it happen. We have to come to you, the selectmen, board of finance, in order to make something happen. And tonight, what I'm going to say to you is if we don't have cell towers, additional cell towers on town or public lands in town, which there doesn't seem to be any political appetite at any level to do, then you guys have an ordinance committee and you can raise the height restrictions on the cell towers so that you can get more than two carriers on a tower. So if you decide to do that, we can improve our cell service. If you decide not to do that, we're pretty much stuck where we are, waiting for people to put in private, private towers. So anyway, little getting back to mobile datacom. So what are the alternatives? Motorola does have a system that does data trunking. We have good radio coverage for our first responders in town because we have a lot more antennas and they're a lot more geographically diverse. So there's a Motorola solution out there. Not cheap. But again, you know, we're talking about our first responders. And we can think about, you know, what that costs, what the subscription costs are there. And, you know, how do we put that against lives, privacy, something like that? But those are the difficult decisions, you know, that board of finance and town council and the selectmen have to take on. Some people say, you know, like, oh, well, you know, we'll have we'll have satellite telecoms, you know, and, you know, all we have to do is just wait. So we have right now high capital costs and high subscription costs. There isn't there isn't a financially viable solution for mobile satellites on first responder vehicles right now. Will there be? Yes. What do you get when people say, oh, well, I can just use my iPhone? That's an SOS. Okay? That's not moving data. It's not receiving data, which is critical to the function of our of our first responders. So there are some options there. We'll be coming back to you to talk about that. The last thing I want to talk about is resilience. One of the things that we look at is utility resilience. You know, when we're dealing with monopolies, you know, and it's very difficult, right? Trying to get information, you know, out of a monopoly, you know, as the lowly New Canaan Utilities Commission is pretty hot. You know, what, you know, what do they gain by by talking to us about their infrastructure? You know, we had, you know, the condition where you're like, one piece of fiber optic cable on Wall Street in Norwalk took down the whole town. Okay, I'm an old telecoms guy. I go way back with internet, right? What was internet built for? Internet was built for the Department of Defense, right? So that it would be a resilient communication system that could take, where you could take out multiple switches and multiple paths and still have reliable communication. Obviously, we don't have distributed switching. Obviously, we don't have resilient or redundant paths. So, you know, I'm hoping that we can try to pry the carriers, the monopoly carriers, to give us some of that information. And go ahead, let's run the run the run the slides.
Yep. How do we do that? You got it? Okay. Where do we see it? Go ahead, flip it.
Sure. Yep.
There we go. Just as, just as a quick review, we started in July of 2023. We reviewed, and this is all cellular service. So what, where are we going? What have we done? And what's, what's, what's our plan and how we address it? We reviewed the studies that we inherited from VCOM and Piercom. We, we took a look at the proposals. And basically, the board of selectmen decided they didn't, they didn't like any of the proposals. And we needed a fresh start. So we did a fresh start. We went to the sighting council to get a a full map of the state of New Canaan and what our coverage is. This is what our coverage map looks like from the sighting council's standpoint. The unfortunate thing about this map is it stacks all four carriers on top of each other. So you can't tell by looking at this what carrier you might like to be part of, quite frankly. And and the carriers maps that you see on their advertisements, et cetera, are are famously incorrect with more coverage than they can actually provide. So we, we felt that we needed to go get a, go get a new deal done. So we did the UCL study where we brought an independent person in, and these guys are terrific. Guys and gals are terrific. They are, they are the worldwide leader in having data for where do cell phones work and not work. And the database is basically put together by speed tests. But what they did for us was a drive by test where they drove 125 miles of road in town, making calls from four different, different phones for the different companies, data calls as well as voice calls. And so we know along the roads exactly what happened. And it went through, it didn't go through. And they put together a pretty sophisticated report that is on online. Anybody can look at, many of you have probably, probably gone through it or looked at it. And it's interesting what what it shows. It really shows that there's actually a lot of coverage, but a lot of calls don't go through. And and the reason for that is capacity or it's a problem within the network that it doesn't get switched over to the proper place from the tower. But if you, if you look at it, for example, Verizon, Verizon's calls, about 40% of them get dropped. They weren't classified as dropped, but they don't get set up. They don't go, they don't go through. There's not enough, not enough bandwidth, et cetera. Verizon runs on 4G, not 5G. The other guys run on 5G. Verizon has a lot more coverage in the downtown, not in the outlying areas. The other guys with 5G have some in the outlying areas. But the point of all of this, when you look at it, when you look at it, if you go a couple more charts to that one, that's the four different, that's the four different ones. And this is the drive by tests. And what this shows is there's, there's a lot of coverage because what that shows up with is coverage. But most of it is not very good coverage. And on the data side, if you look at the data capacity, and most of you, when you do, you do a test and you say, what's, what's the up and what's the down, right? It's 500 gigabyte, 500 megabytes up and 25 megabytes, I mean, down and 25 megabytes up or something. There are the tests that were done with these phones. Only about 15% of them were over 35 megabytes up, which is close to nonexistent from a, from a capacity standpoint. So while we actually have have some pretty consistent coverage, it, it does not provide a whole lot of capacity. All right, now how we solve that? That's a good, that's a good question. So let's, let's just keep going through this. The speed test here, if you see the circles on these maps are where it's very difficult to do business, right? I mean, if you're in AT&amp;T, you see where the circles are. You, you don't have a very good chance of getting hooked up there, right? In the other spots, you're probably pretty good, and that's consistent across. So those are the areas to focus on if we were thinking about how do we get more capacity, right? If you go to the next one, so what do we, what do we do? We think the thing to do, and we've done some of this, but it's a little bit hard to get, get a real handle on it, is we think the key thing, now that we've got the data that we can go to them, to the cellphone carriers with, don't go to the tower, guys, go to the cellphone, guys, go to the suppliers and ask them, what can you do? This is what we, we spent our money. This is what it is. Let's work together and figure out what to do. So this chart says identify, develop, collaborate, be very friendly with them. We try and figure out what we do. The interesting part about this, in my mind, is I don't think they have a very, a very high economic incentive to do business where we are having a problem because there just aren't that many subscribers in the four acre area, right? And and by the way, everybody in town and all the kids have cell phones. So there's no more subscribers they're going to pick up. And they're going to perhaps provide better service, and they're very interested in providing better service. But it's that economic trade off. I just don't think within our town, we win that economic trade off. And that's why I think we're in the position we're in. The other, the other thing that has happened is every time they come to us and say, we'd like to do something here. The other, the other thing that has happened is every time they come to us and say, we'd like to do something here, it's a very hard, very hard push, uh, to do it. And I think that they've run out of, they've, they are running out of, uh, patience, uh, and not, not economically motivated. So I think we, I think we've got a hard problem here, quite frankly. I've talked to both Verizon as well as T-Mobile, and that's consistent with what they say. You ask Verizon, what are you, what's your priority? Is it coverage or is it, is it capacity? They say, capacity, it's service to the people we got. It's not coverage. Uh, T-Mobile, they say, we're not planning on investing anything in your town in the known, in the near future. So it's a, it's a pretty, I have not talked to AT&amp;T, but what this chart says is we'll try and talk to everybody, right? We'll try and talk to everybody. We'll try and solicit, solicit solutions from that. Not just towers, small, small, uh, small sat, small sat type of antennas that are put up on telephone poles, et cetera.
The cans you see on top of the phone poles, Pine Street, Richmond Hill, uh, top of Oak Street at South Avenue, you know, you'll see them around.
So if you go to, you want to flip it? Thank you. So here's, we think this is the right priority, and that is we go to them and we try and expand the coverage and the capacity through existing, exists, existing infrastructure. And it's exactly what Sven talked about earlier. If you take, for example, the Country Club Tower has two, two antennas on it. So by definition, you can't have all four, all four people with two antennas, right? Now, they'd have to put it up another 20 feet or something to put another two antennas on. Uh, they've been asked to do that. They, they hadn't asked, I mean, yeah, Country Club has been asked. The Country Club has turned it down, said it's not worth it to us, but we wouldn't be interested in doing that. And, uh, as a result, for example, Verizon is not on the Country Club, uh, Tower. You can't make a call on your Verizon phone if you're, if you're at the Country Club. And the, the zoning that we have has two, has two issues with it. One of it, one of them is height. Most of the trees in, in, uh, our forest coverage is somewhere between 85 and 95 feet tall. So, uh, when we put, when we put the height limit at 110 feet, which is, I believe, where zoning is today, you're 10 feet over the top of most of the trees. That doesn't give you a very good angle to get through the leaves. Uh, and it, it leaves you the probably two antennas on most of them. Uh, if you take a look at, at the, uh, the antenna that Mr. Ritchie has got in his backyard, he does not have everybody on that. He's got a couple of people on it. And, uh, and which is interesting because they could put another one on, but they haven't had interest from the, the service providers to put them on, uh, which is, so went through the big struggle to get that put up and it's, it's, it's not full. But so our, our, I think the, the best place to go for the, for the easiest time and the quickest time is to deal with the current towers, uh, and see whether we can make some changes to the current towers that would make them more effective. Now, what are, how are we going to study to do that? We've got the UCL data. We're, we are, we are trying, we are almost to the point where we're going to be able to analyze the data with one of the commissioners. Uh, we're, we've hired a programmer to do that so we can, we can have an intelligent discussion with them about what, what, what could they do that would help us? And if they suggest something, we can actually check it. Uh, so that's one of the things we're going to do. The second thing is, and we've done some of this, is what are the accessory technologies that can help? Uh, if you have a booster on your house, does that help you? If you've got a booster in your car? You can solve the pro- there's almost enough, uh, appliances available that you can solve this problem if you know what it is. Uh, so if it's, if it's a problem, you're okay at home, but you drive out and it, and it always cuts out when you get on the road, which probably is what happens. We, you can get, uh, you can get a booster for your car, right? And, and so you can have, you can have that not happen. Uh, so it's not an impossible situation into the independent, individually. Uh, but I, I, I don't want to be negative on this, but I, it is going to be a long, hard slog to get a uni- a, a solution across the town that's going to solve everything for everybody. And to get one, quite frankly, in the next five years that doesn't include towers, we probably couldn't build a tower in, I don't know, three or four years by the time we went through all of the process and the complaints, et cetera. Uh, so we leave who, what our, our theory is, let's see what can do something with the current towers and the current antennas. Uh, let's, let's, uh, try and promote accessory technology for people to be able to solve their individual problems. And Sven's done some of that, and we'd like to do more of that. We have put the stuff out through, uh, Deanna's, uh, Deanna's monthly, uh, letter on what, on what can be done. So, and then the other thing we'd like to do, quite frankly, is to, is to solicit ideas. Anybody got any better ideas? We would certainly be interested in hearing them. And, uh, we would like to communicate more with the citizens. We're trying to figure out the most effective way to do that. See if there's anything else here. I'll just give you, I'll give you one number that kind of, kind of surprises me, and this is speed test performance data. Verizon, uh, 530 attempted calls to, with data, success in 281. Okay, that's, that's Verizon. Uh, T-Mobile, uh, 551 calls, success in 429. Uh, first net for, uh, 523 calls, success in 458. And AT&amp;T, uh, 543 calls, success in 400. And so Verizon, Verizon is, it is so hard, and I think we should support our citizens with the data we've got, to give, if, if you know what you need, where you want your cellphone to work, you should, you should take a look at the new coverage maps we come up with and figure out that's, that's who you ought to be with. Uh, because looking at a coverage map that is what the Siting Council sent us doesn't tell you what to do. It's not indicative. So that's where I think we can add some value. I think that, I think the tower issue is an issue that we will have very little, very little impact on going forward or not going forward.
Thank you, Rich. We're, I wanted to hear you out, so we gave you a, a whole extra bunch of time.
I'm sorry about that.
No, don't know. No, that was fantastic. You're doing great work, both of you and your, your commissions. I really appreciate it. Um, do we have any kind of limited questions here to ask?
We could talk for hours.
Yeah.
We could talk for hours.
I gave them an extra 15 minutes.
Bill's got a family.
I have a question as well. Cause I, I learned so much. So thank you. So, and, you know, totally layperson in this. So I'm just trying to, I, I, I learned is that you were saying that there's actually, there is quite a bit of coverage in this town, which I think the, the average person just assumes like, there isn't a lot of coverage and it's because we don't have enough towers. But so when, what you're saying is the iss- the issue in town is capacity. So, so when we, when you say like, uh, I have an AT&amp;T and if it's, it's dropping a phone call, it's not because I'm only, you know, near Ponus Ridge up and I could drop a call almost anywhere because there, there isn't enough capacity.
Yes.
And the, the other question I'm trying to understand is if there was an ordinance to make the towers that we already have taller. So you're saying, cause many of them have, uh, two carriers on them and you have four. But if I have AT&amp;T and it's already on X amount of towers, and then they add like first net to some of them, I'm still going to have the same capacity problem.
Should have the same problem, but technology advances so that the, the antennas will have more capacity to them. There is only so much what is referred to as bandwidth, which is what the actual wavelength capacity is for, for moving stuff along, which, which you, you need another tower to get more, more capacity. You need another tower to get more capacity.
Are you relatively optimistic that, that if there were an ordinance to have the higher towers, that there really would be, like that, that would have a significant
No.
improvement of capacity?
No, I don't. I, I'm not. And, and I'm, I'm, I'm not because, uh, the town ordinances don't matter. If, and the town zoning doesn't matter if a private citizen decides he wants a tower on his property. The tower builder can skirt the town, go directly to the, to the, uh, the,
Writing.
Yeah, the Siting Council, go directly to the Siting Council and, uh, and put the tower. And the Siting Council's job is to approve towers. It is not to, it's not to not approve them. It's to approve them because they're motivated by their objectives to get more coverage and more, more cellular capacity out to more areas. So the, the, the strategy right now, I can tell you, the strategy right now for homeland towers, uh, is they've concluded that we're, they're never going to be able to put a tower on public land. So they're, they're trying to solicit individuals in town, uh, that would let them put a tower on their land. Uh, and, and if they find, if they find them, the tower will go up. The tower will not have, not be restricted by any of the, any of the zoning laws we have. Uh, and, and it will probably go through, but there will be a lot of tussle. I mean, if you go back and look at Keith Ritchie's tussle, uh, when he put his tower in, right? None of the, none of the neighbors live there anymore.
Anybody else? Quick, very quick. Go ahead.
Work and you, it sounds like you've, the UCL study I think is great, and you've been very methodical about how you've gone about kind of looking at all the data. And I know we developed the ordinance a while back to try to make sense of this issue to the town. So I was just, two things I wanted to say. One is I really like the solution of the boosters. Like if residents could know more if they wanted a solution, because based on your prognosis, it's going to take a while. Like how much does a booster cost for your house? How much does a car boost? Like that would be interesting to kind of educate the public about that. And I guess my other-
Krista Cannon is, uh, getting teed up to, uh, bring a, uh, a booster vendor, you know, a typical booster vendor. There are many, but you know, we wanted to get a presentation and Krista's getting that teed up for us. Uh, that'll be a public session of the Utilities Commission down, uh, on the, in the boardroom, some third Tuesday night of a month at seven o'clock, but you know, it'll be there.
It's a great move forward. And then my other comment is-
She tried it at her house. It didn't work.
Steward of the meeting.
Booster. She could, she could, she did not have enough signal to even boost.
Um, so the other part of the ordinance I want to be brief is to research, you know, changes and advancements in technology. And I don't know if you've looked at all. You talked about small cell, but besides cell towers, has anyone kind of done a deep dive or, uh, to look into other technologies that might be able to mitigate this capacity issue that we have?
The, the answer, the answer to that is we've tried to get an expert, uh, from, uh, through our, our commissioners. And we've had a commissioner that has volunteered to get an expert from, uh, her, from her, her, the company that she's in. Some of the experts that they work with, and they're a financing company, so they're financing all of this stuff. And it's there, that we have not been successful. We've been working on that for nine months, and we've had people that have said they're coming and then they bail out. Uh, and so we just unfortunately have not been successful.
Rita.
Uh, yeah, really quickly, just, uh, you made a comment earlier that people weren't, maybe even people weren't in, cared or didn't show up to meetings. I would argue people really do care. They probably don't even know the town has a Utilities Commission. They're going about their daily lives. Um, I think it's great that we're trying to get this information. I think getting the information out, like I'm a Verizon user. I may switch, right? I think getting the information out to folks would be, I think, helpful.
Absolutely.
I think Deanna's newsletter is great. I'm going to suggest other ways to do that too. Like New Canaan Moms, I swear, gets, can get to folks. I think there are other, uh, ways of, of getting the information out that are maybe non-governmental because people just aren't, they're not clued in. And I, I have friends, they know that I'm on Town Council and they have no idea of any of this stuff. Um, so I think at the very least, getting that information out would be, I think, helpful to folks. And I do appreciate everything you are doing. It's a struggle.
Well, thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to be negative, by the way. I'm just trying to be realistic on, on what's taken place and what, and what we're trying to get done. Uh, we do feel a little funny, by the way, bringing products in. It's like we're a marketer, right? And so it's a little funny to, to-
Even suggesting, even suggesting that, again, showing, telling people some coverage, it's capacity, telling people what the different, you know, uh, suppliers can do or the companies offer, and that there, there might be a potential solve. Even that would be helpful for folks.
I, I think, uh, communication is something we're really trying to focus on. Uh, unfortunately, we don't have, we don't have somebody that's really picked that up on the commission that, that wants to take it and run with it. Uh, it, the projects are kind of hard, you know, and they take a lot of time.
The Cogen guy, um, the Cogen company, Axiom out of Wisconsin, you know, small code generation, five kilowatts, stuff like that. You know, our schools are 50 kilowatts. Uh, we're working with, uh, the principal there, Jim Green, you know, uh, to talk to him. Right now, there's, uh, your neighbor Fred is the only person who has one of these systems in town and is saving money.
Saving a lot of money.
Just a question. Um, the folks are in the four acre zones. If there is an emergency and, and most people have their phone through their internet down, if their internet, they have their phone through their internet. If their internet is down and their cell phones don't work, how do they get emergency calls?
Janet, I've been, uh, looking at that for quite a while and, you know, talking with the, uh, talking with Russ at OEM. And, um, we're hoping to, uh, you know, uh, send out, you know, I've got a one pager, you know, which basically I'm not going to go through all the stuff that you can do. But, you know, there's, there's a bunch of different options, um, you know, for you to get there. And, you know, um, if you're in the four acre zone, you know, um, there are, um, a lot of small Bluetooth connectable satellite pads that you can walk outside as long as you've got a clear shot at the sky, right? You can pick up a satellite, you can send a text. So the next thing I'm working on, it, it was talking, um, with PD, you know, with chief and, and assistant chief, you know, and deputy chief. And, you know, how do we get a text message not to a central place somewhere out in, nobody knows, you know, wherever the text, wherever that satellite text lands, right? Try and get that text to New Canaan Central Dispatch. That's where you want it to go. And right now, um, that's a state thing, it turns out. So we're going to try and, uh, engage our, uh, our newly elected state representatives and senators, you know, to talk, you know, about what is going on, you know, at the state level that prevents us from sending a text to our local 911 dispatch centers? And how do we make that happen? It'd be great, right? Otherwise, what do you have to do? You have to send a text to somebody you know who's in town, who can then call New Canaan Dispatch for you and say, gee, Janet's got a problem. You know, you got to drive out to her house.
Thanks, Van. Appreciate that. Uh, all right, I got to shut this down. Guys, thank you for the hard work. Um, this is incredibly important to our town. Uh, you guys are doing a great job. So the commission, I really, really appreciate it. And I want to remind everyone on the Town Council that we have access to them. They have access to us. We have follow-up questions. We can do that. And as I said, when I took over as chairman, I wanted our, our committees to be doing a lion's share of the work. Like Tom's committee is awesome. These guys are getting after it all the time. We've got e-bikes going on now. I, you know, Tom is writing notes about expanding the cell tower height. You know, they're on top of it. We have many other commissions that touch upon the jurisdiction of the Utilities Commission. Hey, be innovative, be creative, get a, get a public hearing of your committee and get going. Bring them in, talk to them, interface to Rita's point, have more public engagement. Nothing stops any of the council members from noticing up a public hearing. Hillary and Tom are fantastic at doing it. So take the initiative, bull by the horns and get out there. Don't, don't wait around for a public hearing and we can have a whole two-hour-long discussion about texting 911 and things like that. I don't need to minimize that at all. So with that said, thanks, fellas.
I'd like to just add one thing. Can we have the presentation on our tablet?
I sent it to you five.
On the tablet.
I'm sorry, I sent it to you at 5:15. Sorry. But yeah, it's there.
Thanks, fellas. Yeah, all right. Uh, agenda item number five, New Canaan Nature Center, Bill Flynn, 10 minutes. Thanks, Bill.
Hi, everybody. All right. I have a presentation, because I know you love them.
No livestock to bring here today?
No goats? Video of the kids, so next time I'll bring, I'll bring a bird or something, you know? Uh, so thanks for having me today. Last year, I, uh, came to address really two specific items that were coming up in budget season. After last year, um, I, I, every year present to Parks and Rec Commission, because we are a town park. And the idea was, why don't I hit up all the, uh, boards, Board of Selectmen, uh, Town Council, uh, Board of Finance, give a general update and queue up for anything coming up for budget season. So it's going to be my new annual thing because everyone loved it so much last year. Uh, so thanks for having me. Again, um, I think I know everybody, but my name is Bill Flynn, the Executive Director of the New Canaan Nature Center, and have been for seven and a half years. And, um, I need to share my screen. Hold on. Forgot to do that on the Zoom. And I was just telling Sven, I've been at the Nature Center now for, uh, oh, I, I have, I am sharing the screen. Good. All right. I, I still am, yeah. Sorry. Uh, I've been at the Nature Center now for almost 15 years. So, um, I do live onsite if you did not know that. And, uh, with my family, my wife was the director of the preschool and my son, who's in third grade at South School. So, thanks for having me again. Uh, just as a friendly reminder of how, uh, our private part, uh, public partnership started when this, all the land the nature center is, was donated in 1959. From Susan Dwight Bliss, which is why it's called Bliss Park in a lot of the town documents. Uh, in the first year they accepted it, the deed was restricted to be an arboretum. Uh, nature center, bird sanctuary, passive recreation related purposes or a museum site. And within that first year, the town partnered with six, uh, private citizens to form the New Canaan Nature Center Association, which is the nonprofit that we are. And made a letter of agreement and made the Nature Center Association, the designated agent on behalf of the town to fulfill that deed. So that is how the, uh, relationship, uh, has been since it started. And we've been doing that for now 64 years. The letter of agreement that outlines this was a one pager in 1960 and it got upgraded to a two and a half pager in 1970. But that is the letter of agreement that we have all been operating on. As a reminder, the town owns, uh, the property, they own, you all own the buildings. And, uh, we make sure with it, it's all used to fulfill the deed. Just a few, uh, program numbers from this year. Our preschool is our largest program, uh, as far as, um. Uh, our financially goes and summer camp is our biggest program as far as like number of regulars, uh, campers. So. Those are mostly New Canaan residents. We do a lot of environmental education outreach, uh, with thousands of students from all over Fairfield County and Westchester County. Um, and also field trips that come to the, to the site. Making maple syrup there. That was my favorite job I ever had. Now I'm stuck in an office giving presentations, which is fun in a different way. You all got, uh, our annual report and the memo I wrote. So none of this, uh, if anything that you had is all in that. So, uh, I won't, I won't spend too much time here. Um, but you can see that, uh, from our revenue side, our most recent audited financials. Forty-four percent is that preschool, summer camp and environmental education. Our programming makes up about 70% total. The other 30% is from fundraisers and annual appeal and grants. So it's about 70% programming, 30%. On our giving or grant cycle. Expenses is most, like most nonprofits, uh, were heavily staff, uh, oriented with our, with our expenses. And it pretty much mirrors our, um, our revenues. But last year we, uh, uh, brought in about 2.2 million. Uh, just over and spent about just over two. So every year when we have anything in the black, we figure out what projects we want to do. And we implement, um, some upgrades around the campus and I'll show you some of those. Uh, first, some of the town projects that were completed, uh, that is our rock house. That was originally, um. Built to house Miss Bliss's rock collection. And that is the original building that just got redone. Uh, the exterior is done, the interior is a few, a little bit more work. Uh, if you know Skip Hobbs, our resident geologist. He took the whole collection, organized it, cleaned it and it's ready to go back in. So we are, uh, ready to use it, uh, to its full purpose again. Um, few roof work on the cider house. We had a couple of oil tanks that were in the ground that got, uh, taken out, uh, for conversions to, um, propane. Uh, still that were approved last year's budget, the pond dredge of the first, uh, our first pond or Kiwanis Pond. And the Audubon demo that, uh, we talked about last year, that was the, one of the focuses of the project. That is still up, but the scheduled for an upcoming, uh, school break. They just, uh, didn't want to do it when kids, uh, were running around, um, just thought it was safer and easier. And also because of the demo, the, they have to wear full suits and we didn't want to freak anyone out. And so, yeah, we, um. Were set to do that maybe at this upcoming, uh, Christmas or the February or spring break. So it's still set to come down. Uh, the greenhouse ramp was the other, uh, thing we asked for last year, uh, crumbling ramp that was not ADA compliance. It really didn't serve any purpose for the greenhouse, which, uh, we want to make renovations to anyway. Uh, makes a big difference there. We've got three memorial gardens there that. Um, are important to us and the families that are around. Uh, Brian Wilderman has a plaque there. Uh, Susan Hanson, which is Peter Hanson's first wife has a plaque there and Pat Urb. I don't know if those names mean anything to you, but the, their three memorial gardens are right there. They're very nice. And this bare spot, um, we just planted, uh, a ground cover today. And we'll make a nice path and we'll, we'll improve that area, but we were excited to get that ramp down and show off, uh, those gardens. And now it's now safety hazard. And I'll talk about what our future thoughts are with the rest of the greenhouse, uh, later. Um, some of the stuff we completed, uh, we're always trying to improve our preschool classrooms, make them look nice. Um, so we put in flooring, we replaced a bunch of windows because a lot of them didn't close or sorry, they didn't open or close. They were just fixed. So for ventilation for our preschool is important. These aren't that exciting, but we, you know, they're improving our program, which we like. Um, we painted the middle and bottom floors of our education building. That was a big price tag, but, um. And we worked a lot out on the grounds. Uh, the area that is in that picture is between us and First Presbyterian Church. Uh, the border line was not really that well known and after, do you remember the land swap that they had to do for their columbarium? So we gained it on their parking lot side. And after that line was established, basically the buffer, no one took care of because no one knew where the line was. So. After it was established, we really made a tremendous effort to clean all that up. Uh, town helped by removing about 50 trees of heaven, which are the spotted lanternfly trees. So we got 50 of those taken out. We solarized the area because we don't want to use chemicals, which is play pacing down a, a clear plastic and it cooks everything underneath. It's a way to kill it all without. Dumping any chemicals. And now we have a ground cover. So we're, these are just the type of things that we're, uh, doing every year. As much funds as we have, we complete as many projects as we can, um, and we decide what's most important. So I put in here three K, three phase campus plan as our next, uh. As our next, uh, projects and we did a, uh, campus strategic plan, tried to figure out everything we needed. And we're going to try to do it in one go. And the first two are, we are ready to go. Um, the one with the education building that we are asking towns participation in has to do with a municipal building code issue. And I'll get to that right now. And it also I outlined it in the memo. So if, if any of this is, uh, you, I, I. It's clearly written out and this is all the language from the memo too. So don't feel you have to read it all right now, but the, um. Education building is, uh. Oh, here, let me give you a picture. In the upper right, uh, it's around, around the circle on the other side from the visitor's center. Uh, it's where we have our most, uh, preschool and, uh, summer camp classrooms. This was the original visitor's center. If you go way back, this is where the animals were, uh, and it was her original carriage barn, just for history. And, um. The middle is a really open floor concept. The room on the left that you see, we can divide that into two classrooms. We want to put up walls, redo the flooring, redo the lighting, make it two established classroom for our twos program. On the right hand side, you see those partitions. Those are, I mean, they've been partitioned for five years and we would like to give that classroom real walls. Uh, the nature center, uh, is ready to pay for everything I just described. There is a bathroom, uh, municipal code issue that Tiger and Bill Osman approached us maybe three years ago or so. We've been talking about how to solve that problem. And now we're ready to do this, but we can't really do that without the bathroom. Uh, issue being solved first. So that is something we are asking Public Works to, uh, add to their budget. So this will show up. When in your budget cycle. So this is a building code issue, uh, that we would love towns help solve. Uh, this, by the way, so when I said our campus plan, this would set up our preschool and summer camp up for the foreseeable future. Those are our two biggest moneymakers, um, highly mission driven. So this is something we're really eager to, uh, get going. And, uh, I will, as a friendly reminder, the more money we make from these programs, the more money that we're dumping back into the, into the property. So. We, uh, recommend that investment. Uh, any questions on the education building project? Just before I move on, it's, it's really the, we're going to be asking for, uh, solving the bathroom issue or helping out.
Bathroom is the first floor or downstairs?
The first floor, that, that main floor, because there's a, there's one ADA and there's one smaller one, uh, and. Based on the capacity of that floor, uh, this was something I, we weren't aware of, but they, uh, like I said, Bill and Tiger with. I don't remember which assessment, uh, they found this out, but as soon as they found it out, they came and talked to us. So there's a solution in the Brooks room, which is back there. It's like a teacher's room. We have. Uh, we don't use it that much, but they won't, that would be the area where there already is plumbing to turn it into larger bathrooms. And that would solve those issues. Uh, next one is prefab greenhouse. Uh, the picture will explain it the best. With our growing program that we want to accomplish, we don't need a very large greenhouse to accomplish it. Cause everything we want to do is native seeds and native propagation. And you don't need, where you need a greenhouse like we have, like the big one that's by our parking lot. That's for subtropical growing. I mean, that, you don't need that, uh, to do what we want to do. So. That is a picture of like some, like something we would want to put up. It's not the exact one, but some prefab structure, it wouldn't be a permanent building on towns. You know, records, um, it would just be the shell. We can do everything we want to do in that area and the surrounding gardens. This was the urban community gardens that got lead remediated. If you all remember that situation. We can't grow anything in the ground, but everything we want to do and we can accomplish this would all be in trays and planters and things. And so this does work for us. And it's a lot more cost effective than trying to renovate the main greenhouse. The main greenhouse would have been. Million, million five, um, maybe more. And so we just didn't think that was. Going to be the best long-term solution for, especially for the type of growing program and the horticulture program we want to run. So that leaves, uh, and this is also something we're not asking for town, uh, money for. We're just letting you know that. Uh, we can accomplish this with this project. We, we run it past Tiger, at least as a first go around and we're working with him to, um, make that happen. And if. But so far there's no, no issues that we see. New multi-use building. Uh, this is where we think that the, where the current greenhouse that is standing. Uh, we want to do something else with it. Like I said, if we can move our horticulture program up to the, um, old urban community gardens. Something that's very open, uh, an open space would serve every program we have. Summer camp and preschool programs, inclement weather, having a big open space that we can bring classes in there and still teach and the kids can move around is, would be great. Um, something like our harvest fest, like that, that, uh, event. This year we just didn't have a tent and it didn't rain and we got lucky, but having that indoor large space that we can move some of those events in and out would be outstanding. Also the Sturgis room, which is, uh, in our visitor's center where the, the town meetings were when the town hall is being renovated. That's not quite big enough for some of the lectures and things we have, and that's our only meeting room right now. So having more space to be able to do, uh, some of those things. We don't have this figured out yet, but I told you last year that we're going to come back and give you an update about where we were at the greenhouse. Right now we're, uh, our goal is over the next year is to get architectural drawings, um, and. Get a price tag and then come back and say, yes, this is what we want to do with it. This is what we are hoping as far as town participation. So. We're not asking for anything today. It was brought up about having placeholders and five-year capital, uh, plans. Um, not sure what, uh, how to go about that to, uh, have that put in, but we don't have a number. So I don't know how. That was brought up last night. We're talking to Board of Finance, like, well, how do we put this in? And I said, I don't know, but that'll be up for discussion. Happy to. Do whatever work we need to, as a something, but we are hoping that town participates in that. That's pretty much, uh, everything. Um, to summarize, we made more money than we spent last year. We got a lot of good, uh, projects going. We've got money ready to do these other projects that I outlined, the education building and the greenhouse, uh, prefab greenhouse projects. And then this would be a, uh, campaign of some kind to finish it off, but we think this would set us up for the next, you know, 20 years or whatever. And we're trying to get this all settled and, um, yeah, where things are going well.
Great job and great work and stewardship, stewardship over there. Appreciate it. Uh, any questions? Tom.
I'm confused. So this multi-use space, would that be the same, that greenhouse?
Same footprint. Whole top would come off. This is our idea for right now. This is not keeping that a greenhouse. This would be using the same footprint and making some other building.
And would, would that increase your capacity to enroll more kids and?
No, that's with our education building. That'd be gaining classroom space by dividing up those walls. And beyond that, we don't, we don't have an interest in going much bigger. We're already one of the bigger preschools and administratively, we don't think our preschool would gain in. Uh, quality by making it bigger. We could make more money doing it, but, um, we think we're at a good size, which is already pretty big. We've got over a hundred kids and, uh, they're going throughout the woods and it's a lot to, uh, manage now. And we think it's at a good spot, but we are gaining classroom space by renovating the education building.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, uh, let's move along to agenda item number six, Powerhouse Theater Project update, uh, update. 10 minutes.
So, good evening, everyone. Um, thank you for inviting me back to address the town council. I'm Patricia Spigani. Uh, I've been a resident here in New Canaan for 30 years. And I don't know that I ever actually mentioned, but my career, I was, um. Did my career at IBM and when I retired, I decided it was time to do something fun. And I have a double major from Lehigh University in mathematics, which got me into IBM. And technical theater. I did absolutely nothing with the theater degree, except had a really good time in college and learned a lot. And then when I retired and my husband started building the sets at the theater at the powerhouse, he said, you need to come and brush off your skills. So that was five years, seven years ago. And here I am now running the theater and having a great time. So I'm able to personally put the two things together that I love, the experience that I got in being in business. Going back and participating in theater and making it happen in this community. So it's a, you know, definitely a personal commitment for me and the rest of the folks. And you saw a room full of, um, a stage full of kids. Just having a great time and really thankful for having this opportunity in New Canaan. Having a space, the Powerhouse Theater is a very unique thing. It's a, the name of the building is actually the Powerhouse Performing Arts Center. So it is. You know, that's the sign that's on the lawn, right there in front of the theater. We always call it the powerhouse or the powerhouse theater, but it is a performing arts center. And New Canaan is unique amongst our neighboring communities in having this space. So the three things that I wanted to cover today with you was one, to give you, um, a simple one-page update. On where we are as a community theater, as a nonprofit in town. I wanted to give you all an update. I think most of you are very familiar with the plans that we put together for improving the space. All familiar faces from the last time was, I was here, but I'd like to give you an update on where we are, both in the design work. We've made great progress on that as well as where we are on the funding and then conclude with, um. Setting up an expectation that we are coming back to the town for additional funding for the project. So those are the three things that I'm prepared to talk about. I'm going to try to keep it to the 10 minutes that I was requested. There's a lot of information here anticipating that there'll be questions. So I'm happy to be able to refer to any of the information that I provided. But I wanted to remind you all that we are a group of volunteers. We're an all volunteer board. One of the things that you all challenged us, the town challenged us over the last few years was to have more New Canaan representation. We've done that. So half of our board members, either are current residents or. Have been residents of New Canaan and recently moved out of town. The other half are all members of the broader Fairfield County community who are all lovers of the theater. They, we have teachers, we have, uh, Sarah is a business professional, um, in Manhattan, who's also a theater mom. Eric, who joined our board, I should point out before he knew he was going to be on the town council. Uh, so we're strengthening our board, we're strengthening our bench. We're taking all of that seriously so that we, along with the investment, we're asking the town to make with us in the building. We want to build a sustainable model and a sustainable leadership team so that we can. Realize the vision that we have in utilizing the space. We think that's really important. So what have we done in the last year? We have, um, I think you all know, we do six main stage shows. We have 4,500 to 5,000 people come into the theater. That is for, to see the productions. So about 3,000, 3,500 see the productions. And the other thousand people are coming for other things that we do. Um, Bobby Troop, I think some of you may know, is, um, came and talked about his dad for a couple nights. We have classes primarily right now for adults. We've done improv workshops. We've hosted events, the Rotary Club came and met with us. We work with the National Charity League as volunteers. We've had Boy Scout Troop 70 donate us the wonderful flowers we have in the courtyard. So we're doing a lot of things that keep us involved in the community, which is really important to us. Our shows are profitable, so we're, we're very thankful for that. We're very frugal in our investments, but. We're also being profitable, which is helping us contribute more into the capital campaign. Uh, you saw, we've got 17 kids on stage. 12 of them are from town, which is great. Um, we love this experience of having kids on stage, working with adults. It's a totally different experience than having kids do participate in a school production. Some of you sitting at the table know that, some of you have had kids. Some of you sitting at the table know that, some of you have had kids who participated in the program. We're not necessarily expecting to have kids on the stage who are going to go off and be on Broadway. They're working, they're learning how to appreciate the arts. They're learning how to have. Presence so that they can be the next generation of leaders in the community who can represent themselves. Um, we had one parent come and say to us, you know, my son participated in that program. And that helped him become a successful lawyer because he can now stand up in front of people and he lost that stage fright. So we take seriously this idea of having the community participate. So it's not only the adults, but the kids. And that's why we need the additional space. So. It all started with the bathrooms. I'm going to thank those bathrooms. I want to hug those bathrooms because. Without those bathrooms, we wouldn't be here talking about really improving the theater and the campus. This part of the powerhouse, if I call it the campus, it's that little corner of Wavine Park that we all love that really needs to be updated. It's looking a little bit tired and the space doesn't really work anymore. And yes, it doesn't meet ADA requirements. And those of you that know. I've, my mother dragged there for every show for five years with her walker and she managed and navigated. You know, ninety-six years old, she was doing that. And I'd bring all her friends from the inn and we'd have a great time, but we knew it wasn't ideal. So I'm, I'm totally appreciate, we all kind of go, wow, it's an ADA requirement. But they're there for a reason and I firsthand experience and why that's so important. That said. If we want to have bathrooms and we want to have enough bathrooms for the hundred fifteen seats. We needed to take our office and give up our office and build a new lobby so that we could have interior access to the bathrooms. So we've spent a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars on architect blueprints and designs and drawings. To get to a point where we think we've got a rock solid plan. We've got, we're ninety-five percent of the way there to be able to go out to bid. Tiger is our great partner, helped launch some of the great ideas that we have, um, but I think we're, we're finally there. They don't have the set of blueprints, but we've actually made that progress, which is great. So since I came to talk to you. We do have plans. We've raised a bunch of money. Town players has raised six hundred and eighty thousand. Actually, after I checked the mail today, I would say it's six hundred and eighty-five thousand. So, you know, we keep getting those checks and donations from people, which is great. Uh, we reply for as many grants as we can. We're still actively fundraising. We're going out of our silent campaign into a more public one. So that we can bring more participation from the community. The bad news is that the costs have gone up. They've gone up because time has gone on, material costs have gone up. But also because we've all gotten smarter post-COVID and what's required for things like HVAC and air conditioning. So the costs have gone up, but we collectively between the town contribution and ours have raised what we said we needed to raise in order to go out to bid. So what I prepared here as a refer, and I just, could you go back a page, please? At the bottom of this page. One of the selectmen said, gee, there's your nice AI diagrams, AI created chat GPT. Well, no, this isn't. On the right side, that is actually the view of the sledding hill from our campus. And I took our model, which you remember I brought into the town hall and I set it on one of the little posts there. So that's actually what the view would look like off the back of the building. It's a beautiful park, but what we've got right now is not so beautiful. So we want to take advantage of that view. And as, as you recall, the, the center section there, if you look straight in the middle of that picture. Is what we want to turn the annex into, um, the education center. So let me back up a sec. One of the things we did since we met with you all is we hired a professional theater designer. This is a company that's based in Norwalk, Connecticut. Uh, the lead designer for this company happens to live in New Canaan. He married a podiatrist that lives in town. And we invited them to come and help advise us. They did. They were very, very generous with their time. They literally work all over the world, including on, in, um, Manhattan. But they were thrilled to help us because it's their hometown and, and right in their backyard. And they basically said, they looked at the whole campus and they said. Your storage annex would be the best place on that campus, same footprint to put in education center. So we had talked about the potting shed. You all gave us access to the potting shed. Which is much smaller. It's four hundred square feet versus six hundred and fifty square feet. And so we switched the usage because of that. So the, our plan right now is to put our office in the potting shed. So it doesn't need to have water or plumbing because it's not going to be used for public use. And then to put the education center, which can also be alternate rehearsal space because it happens to be almost identical size, a little bit bigger than their stage. And use that for the education center, which we could do classes, we could use it for rehearsals, we could use it for community space. And then off the backside of that building, we would put a ten-foot deep deck. With a wall of glass, glass doors that would take advantage of that view. So at the end of this presentation, the very last page shows you what the back of the building currently looks like. The annex is currently, uh, forty years old. It was built by volunteers. People in the theater who built sets, they built the building. It's okay for storage, but it's really not adequate for the use that we have intended. So those are some of the things that have changed is the use. We've got a professional design. In, in terms of how we use the space, which I think is really important as we plan again for optimal. Optimal, optimizing what we can give back to the community. So the next three pages are just overlays of those parts of the campus that are impacting, um, the ADA. And also the, the theater, what I'd say the key theater components are. Which is the lobby improvements, the office and the education center. And then everything else that needs to be done to make the campus ADA compliant. Alright, I'm going to skip past all of these pages in the interest of time.
Yeah, Patricia, I don't mean to be rude, but.
Right.
We've gone more than 10 minutes past the original 10. So is there any top line that you need from us?
Just setting the expectation is, I'm asking for the town to, um, in the budget cycle to contribute an additional two hundred thousand dollars towards the lobby project. And to fund fifty percent of the education center. The total for that is a million dollars. It's the estimate we have right now for the education center. We've, uh, with Lucy Dason's support, have a bond request in to the state for half a million dollars. And we'd ask the town to, assuming that we get that and hopefully we'll find out in December, we're asking for the town to match that. So that we can do this as one project and pursue it as one project. So that's really the, the bottom line. Looking forward to the, the budget cycle next year.
Excellent. Any questions?
Can I just make one comment? Um, so Patricia, just to, uh, summarize page eight. If you look at those numbers, my understanding is that. At the end of the day, the funding for these capital improvements for these projects. Will essentially, not essentially, will be a fifty-fifty share between the town and town players.
Right. For a building that the town owns, there's very little that we're raising money for, except the, the technical equipment inside the, the education center that. Doesn't become town property, if you will, when we're done.
Excellent. And Patricia, thank you for your hard work. This is a fantastic asset. You managed excellently and really appreciate it.
We have a lot of help.
I know, I know.
It's a group effort. It's definitely a team effort.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I know it's been a long night.
No, no, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, uh, agenda item number seven, American Recovery Plan Act. Review and approve a recommendation for the appropriation of the remaining ARPA funds in the amount of one million. Uh, one million, two thousand, two thousand, six hundred, twenty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents to the general fund. Come on up.
Um, I'm on Zoom. Hi, Mike. It's Ann.
Hello.
How you doing? So what we're doing is, um, as you may know, with the ARPA, it has to be committed by December twenty-four. And spent by December twenty-sixth. So these are projects that we don't believe are going to be fully completed by the timeline needed. So we're taking these funds back to the general fund, which is allowed under ARPA rules for reimbursement for revenue lost. So we're going to take them back. They'll go up into the fund balance. And if these funds are needed for these purposes at a later date, they can be reassigned using our fund balance. So we're asking for it to come back in as a, a loss of revenue.
Understood. Are there any questions, understanding this transfer here? Couldn't be pretty straightforward and simple.
Really quickly, the understanding is it goes back to the general fund. With no earmark for any specific purpose, correct? It's just in the general fund.
We do believe that they will hold some of these funds for these projects. Because they really still want to do the projects. It just won't be done in the timeline.
Okay.
Clear to everybody? Understand? Okay. So, uh, we need a motion here.
So moved.
Okay. So the motion is the approval of, uh, the recommendation for the appropriation of the remaining ARPA funds in the amount of one million. Two thousand, six hundred, twenty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents to the general fund. Do we have a second? Tom, all in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number eight, the appointment, reappointment. Approval of the appointments and reappointment, uh, to the board of finance, appointment of Steve Doka as an alternate member for a two-year term ending December first, twenty twenty-five. Reemploy, reappointment of Michael Chen as a regular member for a four-year term entering, ending not November fifteenth, twenty twenty-seven. Appointment of James Yao as regular member for a four-year term ending November fifteen, twenty twenty-five. We'll have, uh, our selectman, uh, approach. And Steve, sorry, Steve as well.
I just wanted to introduce Steve Doka.
Nice to meet you all. Good evening.
He came through the board of selectmen already, so you are the, the last stop and, uh, we're thrilled to have him as a candidate.
A little bit about myself. I'm CPA, MBA in finance. I'm actually a forensic accountant.
Speak into the microphone.
I'm actually a forensic, forensic accountant. I'm a CPA. I have my MBA in finance. Uh, I run the internal investigations team at, uh, Deutsche Bank for the Americas. Currently, that's my day job. Uh, I have about fourteen years in New York state government, various roles, inspector general. And, um, also, uh, attorney general, criminal division. So, white collar crime stuff, so. I hopefully can apply those skills here.
Feeling very.
Hopefully not, but I, I think I.
Trouble are we in?
I know, I was going to say.
I'm aware of right now, but we, we can find some.
Outstanding resume. We're very happy for your step up and, uh, thank you for, for agreeing to serve. Um, any questions for, uh, for Steve? Any other questions? Anybody?
I just continue to be just impressed with all of the people that come forward and are willing.
Forward to serving.
Thank you.
For being willing.
To reiterate, thanks for stepping up. Yeah.
Thank you.
We get a motion for approving this slate of appointments and reappointments. Janet will make that motion. Uh, Rita will make the second. All in favor? Unanimous? Motion passes. Hey, we'll go on to our last item. Agenda item number nine, project appropriation and bond authorization, approval of the following project. Appropriation and bond authorization as recommended by the board of finance. Ann?
Yes. So what we're doing with this one is doing a bond authorization for the reimbursement of the loan that, uh, is going for, that has gone forward for the housing authority. So this authorization will pay back the, our funds. We will set up a new debt service fund, which we will keep that asset in there, the loan plus the debt, uh, revenue, plus all, all the debt related expenses to it. So it'll be segregated out of the general fund and not affecting from a tax perspective. Um, so this was the authorization that we need in place. So when we go out to market in February, we'll be able to reimburse it.
Understood. Anybody have any questions, understanding what we're doing here? Okay, uh, who would like to make the motion?
I guess I do. A quick question. So. I, I had in my mind, this is too simplistic, but essentially the four million was like a line of credit, what they didn't know whether they were going to need it. Is that still? Is that true or no?
They did need it. They did use it.
Oh, okay. They did need it. Okay.
Oh, yeah. No, they did, they did. It was funded. Um, they did use it. And we're going to treat it, uh, like I said, we're going to, uh, reimburse the town, the, our funds and separate it out into a debt service fund.
Okay. Yeah. It's a good deal.
Yeah, sounds good. All right. So would someone make the motion, reading the, um, capitalized, uh, language there, starting resolution? Eric, please, go ahead.
Uh, motion is made for a resolution authorizing an appropriation of four million dollars for the New Canaan Housing Authority loan, two thousand, twenty-four project. And the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town. And notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed four million dollars.
Do we have a second?
Second.
For a second. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Much, everybody. All right. With that said, uh, we're through the agenda. So, uh, again, just one final reminder. You know, everyone on our committees, get innovative. Think about what, you know, you want to get involved with and set up a meeting and, and get after it. You know, we, we don't have to wait just for a monthly meeting. So I encourage all of you to do that. Okay?
No meetings between now and the.
What?
No meetings to be held by the subcommittees until after.
Well, regarding financial matters, we're certainly allowed to have budget matters. We're allowed. Yes, Penny.
I received a, um, an email today from, um, um, Ms. Cravato at the library.
Yes.
Where a sit-down meeting, just one-on-one. Is that what we are doing? One-on-one interviews?
Yeah. So I received that email as well. Uh, yeah, I don't.
Many.
Yeah. Plus, uh, Eric, actually, would you just remind, uh, just give us a little heads up about your upcoming meeting with the library or on the library?
Hillary and I are going to be meeting on, uh, actually this Friday with, uh, Mark DeWelly and, um. Uh, Doug Stewart, just to understand what their roles are, because I don't have a full understanding of what their roles are. And I, I'm, this is educational for me and, and for the four of us. On November twenty-first, the finance and government committee of the town council will be meeting with them to present. All the questions that have previously been gathered by town council and presenting them to the, um, to, to Mark and to Doug. Separately, I believe Ellen Cravato Sullivan and Rob Lowe, who's the chairman of the library board. Have initiated outreach to individual town council members to have one-on-one meetings to. Just sort of explain their process, their programs, um, a little bit about their budget. In an effort to have everyone on town council fully educated prior to the budget process being resolved. Because they felt that last year, a decision was made at the very end, to which they had no opportunity to respond. And they want to try and avoid that happening again. And to have these one-on-one meetings and to have the meeting with Hillary and me and then the, the, uh, the town council finance committee. Should go a long way to having everybody understand what those pages are. And hopefully have everybody on the same page prior to making final budget decisions.
I appreciate that clarification.
That would be a meeting that needs to be posted.
Yeah, the November twenty-one meeting will be posted.
What about the Friday meeting? The Friday meeting has to be posted. Public meeting, right?
Yes.
My side.
That has to be posted?
Yes.
Hillary and I are meeting with Doug Stewart and, uh, Mark DeWelly, just to understand what their roles are vis-à-vis town council and the library.
Yeah.
I spoke with Ellen today and I suggested, um, you know, and it can be in addition to whatever you're doing. Just like the nature center and the powerhouse, um, have come to kind of do a, a, a presentation on what's going on with their, their organizations. I suggested, because Ellen is new, that she, um, do the same thing, uh, as these organizations have done in advance of budget season. And she was very receptive to that idea. So if you're receptive to her doing that. Not as a budget request, not as a, it's more, she's the new executive director. She wants to talk about sort of what's going on at the library and do sort of a brief presentation to all of you and. And, um, I thought. And, and I thought that that was, you know, we've done that with other organizations. So I thought, you know, we've, we've encouraged other groups in advance of budget season to kind of give people a preview of what's going on in their groups, just so it helps inform the budget discussions.
Got it. Penny?
I think that's fine. And I think it's a great idea. But I think if we're trying to make sure that everybody is on the same page, doing onesies doesn't do that. Because conversation topics will come up with individuals that wouldn't necessarily come up with all individuals. And so maybe we do group.
That's why I suggested coming to the board meeting in December. My suggestion was for her to come to the board meeting in December and present to all of you.
All right, so then we should respond now and say, you're going to come to the council.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so.
Promise that because I hadn't talked to you guys yet.
I'm all on board.
I'm a little more comfortable with everyone hearing the same thing.
Yeah.
I'm all on board with what you've suggested and I like it. I, but what I'm going, where we will avoid is I am not having Eric's, Eric and Hillary's committee have a very substantial meeting. And then have Ellen come in here and then have some mini summary meeting. I will not do that. The only thing I would have Ellen come in to do is say hi and, you know, like a couple of minutes of what she's doing. It will not be a back and forth. That committee will have that discussion. So the substantive of what she wants to talk about, what questions you all have, that's the exact purpose of why Eric and Hillary are handling this. Because the original idea was to come and have the library discuss, you know, the multiple questions that were posed and, and other issues related to, to, to the library. And that would be just in a single, that would have to be a single Town Council meeting. It would waste way too much time that we would devote to our regular public hearing. I'm not going to hold a special meeting on the library. That's what we have committees for. So that discussion can take place. I personally don't, I like the idea of, you know, chatting with Ellen, you know, on one-on-ones. If you don't want to, that's totally fine. Because I think we have the vehicle of having a discussion, a group discussion. I haven't met her, so I'm going to, you know, take her up on a limited discussion. I just think it's the right, I personally think it's the right thing to do, but if others are not comfortable, we have a great forum that's coming, you know, coming down the line very soon. So if you want to have a discussion, great. Otherwise, have, have the joint discussion at the committee. Go ahead.
And I just would like to offer this out though, but just remember, if we're going to follow this, and I think it's an excellent suggestion. But to welcome her and afford her the same respect and reception that some of these other organizations that are also, the town has a partial, you know, stake in. So just to, to approach her that way. It's not, you know, to approach her with respect and a good reception.
Well, yes, I agree with that. I'm not saying I would be disrespectful by saying she can't come in here and talk.
I didn't mean that by the.
Oh, all right, because.
It wasn't towards what your comment was. It was about.
Well, there'll be plenty of time.
There's already a tension over this.
Yeah, no, no. That's why I wanted a, an entire public session of the, of a committee airing out whatever questions and concerns and comments want to be made, rather than just dedicating an entire regular meeting to the library. I'm happy to give them plenty of time to come on in and talk and they'll have, they'll come here during budget season and we'll have committee meetings for their budget and we'll have, so there's plenty of time to come in and talk to us. I just, there's a lot going on there and I think the committee is the best vehicle to have. Rita, and then Kim.
Sorry. So I like, I actually really like your suggestion because I think there's two things here. It's getting to know the person, their vision, what their, you know, there's that. And then there's like specific questions on budgets, two different things. So I agree. I like that approach. When I first came to Town Council, people were already very familiar with the director, that like the original. I'm forgetting her name right now. Lisa and Hillary, and I hadn't met her. So we sat down and chatted with her, really got to know her, got to understand where the vision, what like her vision was and what she intended to do. That was really helpful. And that didn't happen that next time that, that, that person came, the new person came in. So I think it's a great idea to have her sit here and like just introduce herself, get to know her and not get into those tough questions yet and just get to know her. I also think if we, like to your point, if each wanted to visit her separately, that's great too. But I, regardless, I think having her come here to talk to all of us, because none of us are as familiar with her, I think that really makes a lot of sense.
Kim?
Yeah, one of the reasons I like it is because I think the town needs to know what her vision is, since we do contribute over two million dollars to the library. So I think it's a great suggestion. In service of the due diligence that we're going to do in Eric and Hillary's meeting, and this is something I was going to request for everyone's budget meeting. Is there a way to email everyone on Town Council? So if we all want to attend, like say this meeting or Health and Human Services, I'd be happy, you could send out an email. I didn't really know last year when all those meetings were. I kind of sure it. Like, is there some way for us to let everyone on Town Council know if we want to attend the budget meeting for this committee, that committee, can we email the whole Town Council so that we're aware of that? That would be helpful to me.
It's a great point, Kim. I think in reality, that should be handled by the chair and co-chair of each committee. Like, you know, Tom and Hillary, I know they're very fastidious about saying, hey, you know, they even go to the extra mile of trying to work with our schedules to set their own committee meeting. So I like their model. So every committee member should be, you know, kind of following that path and say, okay, hey, everybody, I'm looking to have a meeting on next date. Because as we get into the budget season, there's a lot of dates flying around and there's limited time for everybody involved. So I think trying to get a, a, a date that people can, with, and not everyone can attend. We all have busy lives. But the chair and co-chair are the ones that are saying to the entire Town Council, hey, this meeting's on for this date, you know, hope you can attend and this is what we plan on discussing. Again, I think the model with Tom and Hillary is working.
Yeah, but I think bylaws and ordinances are a little different, to be honest. Like, I think that, so if every committee tried to accommodate everyone's schedule for every meeting, that would be, I think, that would be very difficult.
Yeah.
But I think for bylaws and ordinances, it's somewhat different because it's their bylaws and ordinances. Like, we all kind of should be sort of involved in that.
Yeah, I get it.
It's different.
But I'm just saying, I agree with you. It's difficult to accommodate everyone's schedule. They make an effort. But most importantly, to answer Kim's question is to challenge, co-chair have the obligation to let everyone know on the Town Council, I'm having a meeting on this date, show up, here's the agenda, if you can show up. And they get recorded and you can watch it. Yeah. Oh, Hill, Hillary, sorry, go ahead and.
Hi. Yeah, I just wanted to set some expectations for next week's meeting. Can everybody hear me all right? I'm sorry. Okay, thanks. You know, what, what Eric and I are, are doing with our committee is meeting with the two town nominated Board of Trustees members who have a very different role and a very different responsibility than the head of the library. Like, the board doesn't really get involved in the operations of the library. So the board members are not going to be able really to answer questions about programming and, and, and things that really have to do with the day-to-day operations. That is more appropriate for someone like Ms. Cravato. You know, the, the role of the board is governance, as it would be with any board. So you, with board members for like other nonprofits, you wouldn't necessarily get into the day-to-day decision-making. So I just want to set those expectations to the extent we're thinking of having Ms. Cravato come to talk about those things and how the library runs on a daily basis and how they pick things and whatever. Because a lot of the questions that are proposed to be posed to Mr. Stewart and Mr. Deweyly are really outside the scope of their responsibility. So I, I, I think we need to manage those expectations a little bit and to the extent that that impacts whether we have Ms. Cravato come just to give an overview of her job and what she does. That might weigh in favor of one approach over the other.
Hillary, I appreciate that. I think that, that clarification goes a long way. Tom, and then we're going to shut this conversation down. So go ahead, Tom.
So I think we all appreciate that we have a diversity of ideas and it's good to hear different views. I have a different view about the role of or maybe not a different view, but a, a, an opinionated view about the role of Mark Deweyly and Doug Stewart. When we agreed as part of the MOU years ago to, to assign board members that would sit on the library board, we didn't sit down at the beginning and delineate the responsibilities of those people. And as a result of that, they've really had no function in that role. It's been very confusing, very frustrating to them not knowing. And I would just caution that if that, if that concept was never really meant to be, let's be prepared to just let it go. I'm not saying that we would reopen the MOU or change any of that, but if the Town Council were to decide that, that actually relying on them as a, as a liaison in a liaison function is really awkward and unnecessary, given that we have an infrastructure for liaison anyway. Think, just think about whether, whether we really need them to continue in that capacity. I would very much encourage them to remain in the library board as long as they felt they could make a contribution. It's been true from day one that their, their primary legal function and their obligation is to the library, not to the Town Council. And so it's always been a kind of a weird thing. And if, and if it's not meant to be, let's think about just letting it go.
Can I just say one thing? I, I also, Tom, I appreciate the diversity of ideas, but I also have a strong opinion that those representatives were in the MOU for a reason. So this is the first time I've heard of a meeting that we can all participate in with them to see what, you know, define more of what their role is. And I think it's really important that we explore that before deciding to say it's not meant to be. I don't, I don't even get the sense it's not meant to be. It was in the MOU because it was something that the constituents and the residents wanted as a way to have some kind of a voice in the way the library budget was spent and/or communicated what their goals were. So I think, I think it's to be determined and it's a totally open question.
I think that's the purpose of why we need to have a committee here, have the committee dedicate their time block and these questions and concerns can be fully aired out.
I, I'm sorry. I'd just like to add, the meeting, if you are going to have a meeting with Doug and, and Mark, you need to post it and advise everybody the meeting is taking place. But furthermore, the questions that I provided and resent had already been given to the library. So to give it to them on the twenty-first or the later meeting really is just delaying it. They should come prepared with some of the answers or lead us as to where we can get the answers to move forward prior to the budget process.
So it's, it sounds to me like Hillary, maybe you and I need to rethink what the purpose of and whether we should even have the meeting on this Friday, the fifteenth, and what the purpose of and the format and the agenda should be for the meeting on the twenty-first.
Sure.
I, I was, I was thinking we'd get together with Mark and Doug on Friday, just because I've never met them in that capacity and I wanted to know what the heck they do. That's all I was doing this Friday. This Friday was not going to be airing of any questions or giving them any questions. And as you said, they've already had the questions. And I also wasn't planning on this Friday to have them come with answers to any of these questions.
No, no.
None of that was the purpose of this meeting on Friday.
This is not my imposing them on you.
Yeah, I don't even know if you can get it posted in time now.
I don't think we can.
Yeah.
I think he needs.
For Friday at two o'clock.
Oh, is it?
Oh, okay.
We have time. If, Eric, let's, we'll talk.
All right.
All right.
I mean, I just think that. We'd like to attend though, and this is the first time I'm hearing. I don't even know if I can be there. So I don't know when it is, but I would like to have a little bit more coordination, since it is a very important meeting, to see if we, if most of us could attend if we want to.
Well, here's the thing, if it sort of defeats, anybody can attend that wants to, obviously. If the, if the point is to have them meet with our committee, we have these committees and where we would report back. If, if it's going to be an entire, if it's going to be the entirety of Town Council, then we should just have them appear before Town Council. But obviously, you know, it's the twenty-first organizing between the library, board members and our committee is a task in and of itself. And we're, you know now that it's next week. So I'm just kind of confused.
Hillary, I don't mean to cut you off, but I actually agree. I can see this kind of going off the rails. What I mean is you're going to have two here, like it'll become two hearings. And that's not the point. It's just, you know, let's have one hearing. People can show up, questions can be asked, answered, things can be aired out, the role of the liaisons, all of that. So Friday will turn into what I guess next week is going to be if, unless, you know, you had an agenda that just said, meet and greet, you know, ten minutes and everyone get out, you know, if that's it, then I don't even know what the point of that would be. So this will end up becoming something a little bit more cumbersome. And quite honestly, I have to say, I don't even know, and I really just want to get into all of this, but I don't know if that meeting needs to be posted. I really don't know. Because under the FOIA law, you post for a meeting where there's a, a discussion about taking a certain action. And that, I've looked at the law, that meeting is, as of being described to me, is like a meet and greet, just no different than if I sit down and I meet with Ellen. I'm not going to post that up. Just want to meet her and say, hi, I'm Mike. Oh, you're Ellen and what do you do?
Yeah, it's two people.
Even if I had.
Party, that makes it a requirement.
Yeah, but I still, I mean, I could ask Ira, but, you know, again, it, it's meeting for the purpose of, of discussion to take an action. This meeting that he's talking about is about just their meeting. Eric, I have never even met these people. I don't know who they are. So I, I don't want to go down a rabbit hole of a FOIA. I'm literally shutting this meeting down like in thirty seconds. But if you guys want to post that up and have a short agenda meeting, great, you know, agenda item of a meet and greet or, or don't even have it and just show up next week. I, I don't want to burden the committee like that. Then I don't want them having two separate meetings. Just then everyone show up next week and, and ask whatever you want and shake hands. That, that's my suggestion.
But Mike, just to clarify, these one-on-one meetings with Ellen, they're okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's correct.
I, I have a quick question.
But not mandatory.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Question. At some point, we sent questions to Christina and they were sent. I just, where did, are they being answered or like what's happening with those?
That, I think that's part of the, the, you know, Eric and Hillary meeting is to sort of flesh out what is really the role of their budget presentation? Because, I mean, I don't know, but that almost felt like a list like you gave to the Board of Education during a budget cycle. Not, not what your liaisons to the library would be doing. That strikes me as more, you know, budget-related during the full season. So I think my, my thought was Eric and Hillary were really trying to help flesh out the role because I think they need some guidance on, you know, what Alec and Dr. Deweyly's role will be with the library as liaisons for you to their board. And so I think to me, Hillary and Eric really need to sit with them and communicate back and forth what, what both parties feel is their role. Because those questions really are more budget-related and should come through the budget price. I didn't see them all, but it was a very lengthy list. It was a lengthy list.
With this, and talk, I'll let you speak in a second, because really this conversation is longer than it should. Hillary and Eric, if you guys want to have this meeting on Friday, then just notice it up. If you choose saying there's no point, it's going to be some large, it'll end up being duplicative. Don't have the meeting. Have, show up on next week and then have that discussion. I think that's just the way you should handle it.
I just want to say that I spoke with Ellen today myself, and I know Deanna did. That what they really want to do is just make sure you all have all the information that you need, you know, for the budget, at the budget time, at the appropriate time. And so they're trying to reach out one-on-one. They're, they wanted to join these meetings. They did feel that Doug and Mark, they wouldn't be able to answer half those questions, nor would any of their other board members. Those are operational questions that the treasurer can answer, that the operations people can answer. And Doug and, and Mark were felt very sort of unprepared and ill-equipped to answer those questions. So it was.
That makes sense. Those questions, look, they need to be answered. I agree that their operational personnel need to answer them. But the point is, is having those answers well in advance of budget season. Okay? And it's not a discussion about the budget because we're going to honor that. We're not having that. But those questions, because there's so many, we can't have that discussion during budget season. We don't have the time. That's why right now, in the middle of November, it's appropriate for the committee, the Finance Committee, to have the liaison show up. You can discuss that role. Have operations people there to answer these questions. They've had them now for months. Even if they wanted to submit them in writing to everybody and then we can talk about that to have a more efficient process. But I leave that up to Eric and Hillary. That's the point of the committee. They don't need me to direct these things. All right? Anything else? Do we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Mike, seconds or two. All in favor? All right, everyone. Thank you all.
Christina and Mike, eight fifty-one. Yes.
All right.
I think it's a good idea. I understand why you want to do it.